May fifteenth, seven P.M. is now called to order. Councilman Goodspeed will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. City Clerk, would you please take a roll?
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton?
Here.
Mayor Protem Zalinski?
Here.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Here.
Mayor Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Grabowski?
Here.
Councilmember Pontiac?
Here.
City Manager?
Here.
City Attorney?
Here.
City Assessor?
Here.
C.P.W. Director?
Here.
Finance Director?
Here.
Planning and zoning Director?
Here.
Public Safety Director?
Here.
City Engineer?
Here. Thank you. Public hearings, we have none. Citizen comments on agenda-related items. This is an opportunity for citizens that are present to speak to any item that is on the agenda. If you would like to speak, please come forward, state your name and address, then limit your comment to five minutes. Are there any citizens that wish to speak on agenda-related items? If not, we'll move on to the consent agenda. All agenda items marked with an asterisk are on a consent agenda and considered by the city manager to be routine matters. Prior to approval of the consent agenda, any member of council may have an item from the consent agenda removed and taken up during the regular portion of the meeting. Consent agenda items include approval of minutes, payroll, invoices, notification regarding the next work session, and consideration of a banner permit to Manistee Area Chamber of Commerce. At this time, council could take action to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Goodspeed, second by Mayor Protem Zalinski. Is there any discussion? Please take a roll.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Zalinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Pontiac?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Unfinished business, we have one. None. New business. Item A, consideration of approval approving the Downtown Development Authority proposed budget for fiscal year 2018-2019. The City of Manistee is required by state statute to approve the budget of the Downtown Development Authority before it can be adopted by the Downtown Development Authority Board. The DDA presented their proposed budget to the city council at the April seventeen, two thousand eighteen city council work session. If approved by council, the Downtown Development Authority must still hold a public hearing on their budget and vote to adopt it. At this time, council could take action to approve the Downtown Development Authority's proposed budget for fiscal year 2018-2019.
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion by Councilmember Beaton, a second by Mayor Protem Zalinski. Is there any discussion? Please take a roll.
Councilmember Pontiac?
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yep.
Mayor Protem Zalinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of adopting the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen budget and capital improvement plan. Under Section seven dash four of the Charter, the annual budget must be adopted before May fifteen of each year. The budget has been the subject of multiple work sessions and a public hearing. At this time, council could take action to adopt a resolution approving the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen budget and capital improvement plan for the City of Manistee.
And I'll make that motion to do it.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Goodspeed, a second by Mayor Protem Zalinski. Is there any discussion?
I'll have a question. Would Mr. Bradford or Mr. Taylor be able to go over the changes that was made in the
Yes, there were just a very few changes. One of the changes was the council elected to remove a thousand dollars from the Manistee Saints and put that towards the Manistee County Historical Museum, so that's reflected. Council didn't approve the additional eighteen thousand dollars that the DDA was asked to give to the city for reimbursement for services, so that change is reflected. I updated all the health insurance costs based on the new numbers. Those numbers are reflected. In the general fund, that resulted in about a two thousand dollar surplus, which I put towards an additional amount towards the equipment that we have to replace in there because I don't have a firm cost. On the two hundred thousand dollars from the oil and gas fund, additional withdrawal, that's taken into consideration and shown in the budget. And it's also reflected in the capital improvement fund and the street funds in the local streets for additional street paving.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any further questions or comments? City Clerk, would you please take a roll?
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Zalinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Pontiac?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Item C, consideration of a distribution of interest and penalties for denied principal residence exemption policies. The policy will cover the collection and dispersment of denied principal resident exemptions to make sure that we are compliant with MCL two one one dash seven CC. The State of Michigan is requiring this policy to be compliant with the new AMAR guidelines. At this time, council could take action to approve a policy to make sure we are compliant with MCL two one one dash seven CC on collection and distribution of interest collected on a pre-denial.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Mayor Protem Zalinski, a second by Councilmember Goodspeed. Is there any discussion? Would you please take a roll?
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Zalinski?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Pontiac?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Item D, consideration of a resolution changing the board of review dates for July and December. The State of Michigan requires municipalities the option to change the July and December board of review dates to accommodate assessors that have multiple units they assess to assure the assessor can be present. At this time, council could take action to approve a resolution to change the July and December board of review dates.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Mayor Protem Zalinski, a second by Councilmember Goodspeed. Is there any discussion? Would you please take a roll?
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Zalinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Pontiac?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Item E, consideration of approving eliminating the soft billing practices for Manistee ALS Services for city residents. The current practice for ALS billing for Manistee Fire Department ALS service is soft billing for the balances after insurance payments. After careful consideration and gathering data, it was determined to discontinue this practice. At this time, we are requesting to eliminate soft billing practices for city residents for ALS services provided by the Manistee Fire Department. At this time, council could take action to eliminate soft billing practices for Manistee ALS Services for city residents.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
I guess my next question?
I have a motion by Mayor Protem Zalinski, second by Councilmember Grabowski. Are there any questions? Comments? Chief, if you could please, the, this says ALS, but I understand we're talking about all, all services provided?
Correct, it'll be all EMS services.
All EMS services.
Correct.
So BLS, ALS.
Correct, all encompassing. Not worded appropriately by myself, but it's all EMS services.
Okay, so we'll modify that?
I'll just modify that all Manistee EMS services for CM.
EMS services.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
So that, we would reflect that as all EMS services to city residents?
Been noted.
Insurance only?
Yep.
Any other questions or comments? City Clerk, would you please take a roll?
Councilmember Pontiac?
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Zalinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Item F, consideration of parcel split and combination request from Thomas Amor Sr. and the Good Shepherd Lutheran Church. Mr. Thomas Amor has purchased the north two thousand one hundred ninety-six point six five square feet of the parking lot from the Good Shepherd Lutheran Church. On March twenty-two, two thousand eighteen, Mr. Amor received the necessary variances from the zoning board of appeals to request a parcel split and combination. On May third, two thousand eighteen, the planning commission reviewed and requested the recommended council's endorsement. At this time, council could take action to approve the request for Mr. Thomas Amor Sr. and the Good Shepherd Lutheran Church for a parcel split and combination that will combine the north two thousand one hundred ninety-six point six five square feet from the parking lot, fifty-one dash six six four dash seven oh three dash oh seven, and with three oh three Fifth Street, fifty-one dash six six four dash seven oh three dash zero one, as shown on the survey prepared by the Spicer Group, job number one-two-four-three-seven-four SG zero one seven.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Councilmember Beaton, and a second by Councilmember Goodspeed. Is there any discussion?
Can you repeat that?
What were those numbers?
Would you please take a roll?
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Zalinski?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Pontiac?
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Item G, consideration of a memorandum of understanding to participate in the Project Rising Tide program. The City of Manistee has been selected for participation in Project Rising Tide program through the Department of Talent and Economic Development. The mission of Rising Tide initiative is to provide at-risk communities with the tools they need to design and build a successful economic framework. It supports vibrant, thriving communities to attract business investment and talent by creating a sustainable path towards economic stability and growth. A memorandum of understanding must be signed to participate in the program. The city attorney has reviewed and approved the memorandum of understanding. At this time, council could take action to authorize the mayor to sign the memorandum of understanding for the city to participate in the Project Rising Tide program.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Mayor Protem Zalinski, a second from Councilmember Pontiac. Is there any discussion? Ms. Blakesley, could I ask you to give a brief review of this for those that are present? I know I've read the literature and we've, we've had some conversation on it.
Yes, this is a new program for communities that are selected. It's not where you apply for it. They actually select the community and they come to you to ask you if you wish to participate. What it does is they provide technical assistance, and I listed the assistance that they'd provide the other communities in that brochure that was included in your packet. And I have since then contacted them to see if there's other services outside of that that we are looking at needing for the city, such as a retail market analysis that the DDA would like to see, also updating the historic district guidelines. We are currently, our guidelines are based on a plan from nineteen eighty-one. And pretty much what they said is we can tailor our request for what our community needs as far as assistance. It's not where they go out and recruit developers or anything of that nature. It's for like the documentation, supporting reports, and that kind of assistance. You can do branding, many different things. So what it does is it provides at no cost to us services that we otherwise would pay for.
I like that, no cost to us.
Thank you.
We will have some training opportunities for, for city staff?
Yes.
And we'll be forming a committee?
Yes.
Steering committee?
Yes, that's all included in the memorandum of understanding.
Okay. Thank you very much.
What does, what do they, what do they mean by provide at risk? Are we a risk or something?
Well, I think it's because of the fact that we probably haven't gotten out of the recession as fast as some other communities have, and we have completed the RRC certification, so that was one thing that's listed that we've already done. But they don't look at communities that aren't having any issues, you know? I guess maybe they just feel we need a little help and for free, we'll gladly take it from them.
Well, Central Lake in our district was the nineteen, two thousand seventeen recipient of the process. And, you know, I saw the same thing. I mean, it, it one, it says at risk and then it turns around and it supports vibrant, thriving communities, and I'm making a little conflict there.
It's their language, not mine.
Okay.
I think it's a really good thing. I had an opportunity to talk with some people from Harrison. They, they were involved in this Rising Tide, their community. They had nothing but good things to say about it, and it, it moved them forward pretty fast.
Yeah, I think, I think it's going to be a win-win for us.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you.
Thank you.
City Clerk, would you please take a roll?
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Zalinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Pontiac?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Item H, consideration of a land use and management agreement. River Park Place LLC and North Channel Investors LLC are owners of the properties immediately west of the Maple Street Bridge on the north side of the channel. The city has a riverwalk easement over both properties. River Park Place LLC and North Channel Investors LLC have requested an agreement that will permit their construction and maintenance of moorings along the constructed seawall. At this time, council could take action to approve the proposed land use and management agreement and authorize and direct the mayor and city clerk to sign the same.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Mayor Protem Zalinski, a second by Councilmember Beaton. Is there any discussion?
Just a couple of comments. I think this is a really good move, marketing-wise, for them. They've sold over half of those condos. And I know, as a realtor, we get asked frequently, is there a boat slip that comes with it? Or a garage? Those are the two main questions that we get. So this will help facilitate them and make those condos more desirable.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? City Clerk, would you please take a roll?
Councilmember Pontiac?
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Zalinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Item I, consideration of approving a contract for the two thousand eighteen sanitary sewer rehabilitation project. A part of the city's wet weather correction act of plan is to repair sanitary sewers, which indicate signs of groundwater infiltration. This initial project will reline three thousand three hundred fifty feet of sanitary sewer pipe. The project was publicly advertised with two bids received. One bid was submitted past the deadline and was rejected. The remaining responsive bid is below estimates and is recommended for approval. The city attorney has reviewed and approved this contract. At this time, council could take action to award a contract with IPR Great Lakes LLC in the amount of four hundred sixty-four thousand, six hundred sixteen dollars and ninety cents, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the documents.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Mayor Protem Zalinski, and a second by Councilmember Goodspeed. Is there any discussion?
Was this talked about last year when they were talking about the sewers and all
Mr. McCullough, would you like to respond to that, please?
Yes, as part of the current NPDS permit, this, we were required to develop a wet weather corrective action program, so this is the first step in implementing that program. And we've planned it for the past year.
I was wondering, because I, I knew I had been up here, out there listening to it.
And we're considering this a pilot project, so there will be another project that does the same type of work, only a much larger scope, that will bid out next year and bring back before council as well. So this should add another fifty years of life or more to those, that thirty-three hundred feet of pipe.
Nothing coming out of your budget, though?
It all comes out of my budget.
Is this, is this part of the bond, the recent bond?
Part of the first bond that we sold, yes.
Could you, did you ask or tell, explain how you decided which areas you were going to fix, or?
Yeah, the engineers, when we completed the portions of the work of the SAW grant, we televised the majority of the sewer pipes in the city. We're just finishing up some of that. And so the engineers looked at the conditions of the pipe, looked at how much water intrusion was coming in through the cracks in the pipe, and then also identified leads that come into the, the pipe mains that are not active anymore. And so, you know, we were able, the engineers were able to match up that every lead that shows coming into that main matches up to a house where we have multiple leads that tap in. They did dye testing to make sure that, that we knew which ones were active and which ones were not. So when the pipe gets relined, the entire inside of the pipe will be lined. It'll add new structure to the pipe. It'll seal up all the cracks, all the leaking infiltration, but it'll also cover up all the old leads that typically leak water. And then, is it three feet? Each lead will have a separate piece of liner that goes up three feet into the private leads. Those are typically where the leads will, will break and crack, and so those will also solidify those and reduce infiltration.
I'm kind of, I, it blows my mind to figure out how they're going to do that without digging a hole, but.
Little robots.
I know, I know, I, you know. I noticed there was some, I'm just curious, there's a, they, you have some sixty-inch pipe in here. Where's that sixty-inch pipe on that?
Those are manholes. The sixty-inch are manholes?
Okay, okay. My mistake.
Any other comments or questions? Thank you, Mr. McCullough.
You're welcome.
City Clerk, would you please take a roll?
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Zalinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Pontiac?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Notices, communications, and announcements. Item A, a report from the city assessor, Alternatives for Area Youth, and the PEG Commission will not be rendering their report this afternoon. A regular part of each council meeting is a report from a cooperating agency, organization, or department. At this time, Ms. Molly Weststone will report on the activities of the assessor's office and respond to any questions the council may have regarding their activities.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We have another successful year. We've had a lot of fun, and so let's start our report. Our taxable value has gone up to a hundred and ninety thousand, eight hundred and eighteen nine hundred. We continue to make small incremental increases. Our market is, is improving. We're having more sales, so it's looking up. Our assessed value change went up to two hundred and thirteen thousand, four hundred and forty-three thousand dollars. That is an increase. We do have Renaissance zones. We have one in the real property and three in personal property. The Renaissance zones parcels are the old chemical plant, which it is owned by Reith Riley now. March Board of Review, we had sixteen people came in to protest values. We had eleven hardships, twenty-seven veterans, and fifty-four total petitions, which was the same as last year. Our taxable value percentage overall went up one point six four percent. We are now getting into the small business tax exemption on personal property and the EEMP, which is the state plan that eliminates the industrial personal property. So we have two more years and all of the industrial personal property, if they file, will be phased out. So with those things, we are doing really well.
I have a question, or do you want me to wait until you're done?
No.
If you could go back a slide. The commercial?
Mm-hmm.
Where we show a decrease of another one point six four percent?
We did have some large tax tribunals this year in the commercial class, and the county had me at a fifty ratio, so we did lose money due to, um...
What area of the city were those in, basically?
Pardon?
What area of the city were those in?
Downtown River Street. So we are seeing an uptick in our market. It'll just take a little while to catch up. Our assessed value percentage change was three point oh four percent overall, which that is good. That means our market is increasing. Your taxable value by class, your residential class is seventy-five percent, commercial is seventeen, personal is six, and industrial is two percent. That is the end of my report.
You don't know how the overall assessed value by class would compare to other communities,
If you go back two slides, the percentage change, is that what you're asking? So we've had some ups and downs as the markets fluctuate, and the personal, as everybody starts filing the small business tax exemptions, which, on the other side, the State of Michigan reimburses you the lost revenue. It does no longer show up on my side on your taxable value, but the state does reimburse the city for those lost revenues.
I'm pleased to see the residential going up four point three percent.
I am, too.
That's great.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We appreciate your services.
I appreciate you having us do your work. I have a lot of fun here.
At this time, Ms. Sheila Kaminsky will report on the activities of the Alternatives for Area Youth and respond to any questions the council may have regarding their activities.
Good evening, Your Honor, council. I'm here to give the two thousand and eighteen spring Manistee County Teen Center report to you. I'm going to start from my last visit here, last May, when we were just, at this point, spring, ending spring, going into summer. We were busier than ever last summer at the start with the softball season. The softball association came in and they spruced up their field, and they played a lot of ball right almost halfway through the summer. There were all kinds of different leagues, the traveling leagues, the softball girls' practice. They came, people just came out to play baseball. It was kind of wild, and we were happy to be there for whenever they wanted to play. They had regular games and double headers and a couple of weekend tournaments. Their traveling little league got to play under the lights at night a couple of weekends. They started eleven o'clock in the morning and they played until dark, and the little And the little guys were out there playing under the lights, and they were so excited that they got to do that. They were pretty happy. Our concession provided hot dogs and popcorn and soda pop for those people, along with the use of the bathrooms. They gave us a schedule, so we tried to be there when they were playing, so we knew if they were playing an early game, we would open early. If they were playing late, we stayed. Our summer fundraiser was an ongoing yard sale. Every weekend, we opened up the doors and had a bit of a yard sale. The materials that we were selling were donated from people who had yard sales, were done with their yard sale, called us up and said, "My yard sale is done. Would you like the rest of my stuff?" So we would go and get it, bring it, and then we would sell whatever we could. And then, once we were done with all of their stuff and our stuff, then we moved it on to be repurposed at Goodwill, so it kind of made a full circle. The proceeds helped us to buy cleaning supplies, paper products, a VCR, NCD movies, so that the kids had things to watch on rainy days. And all of the people that came from out of town, some of the baseball people and people that were just visiting in the summer, came in and were just in awe that we had, that we offered this to everybody and that we offered it to them free of charge. They were like, "We don't have to pay to use?" "No, you don't. Just, it's here for you to use." So they were really excited about that and couldn't wait to go home and tell everybody that they got to go someplace and do fun stuff for free. Then school started, and in September, we did the first two weeks of school. I do cookies and milk for the kids after school. Now that Kennedy has third, fourth, and fifth graders, it's a bigger need, I think, for that, because when the sixth, fifth, sixth, and seventh graders used to come down for that, they were, you know, a little bit too old for that. They liked it, but they didn't want to admit it. The third, fourth, and fifth graders that come after school really want milk and cookies after school. So it's nice for those first two weeks that school starts that we do that. We serve about 20 kids right after school, 20, 25 kids right after school, 3 o'clock till 5, 6, then they go off to practices or dinner. We average, if we add everybody up and we do a really crude head count, we count the kids that come every day. Some days, there's fewer. Some days, there's more. We average it out, 365 days, we probably see 15 kids a day, 365. That doesn't sound like a lot, but when you think who those kids are, how much they need that center, it's important that they're there. And like I say, some days, we have a lot more. Some days, we don't have any. Then came winter, and the city was very quick to get the rink set up and get the skates to us and get us ready for skating. Winter was not as helpful as it could have been. It was kind of an iffy winter. We skated some, didn't skate as much as we could have. We were at nature's mercy during that time, but we did have, we never had a day where we had 200 people there at one time like we have in the past. But overall, I believe that we served 300 skaters. The J.C.'s purchased 42 pairs of skates for us this year. They had their annual fundraiser throughout the year, and they delivered 42 pairs of skates, which replaced about 40 pair of 50-year-old skates that we had in the past. So I can say we still have at least 400 pair of skates from this big that strap onto your boots to some really high-tech hockey skates right now that the J.C.'s just purchased us. So we're really excited about that. Next year, we hope to be able to use them a lot more, provided winter supplies the ice. Are we now? J.C.'s, keep my notes. Here we are at spring again. The city people took care of the ice rink and got everything gone, and we shined everything up. The floor is just gleaming and the, you know, everybody's ready to start. The field is all spruced up. Grass is green, and they're all ready, doing softball. They've had two weekends already where they're playing softball. The girls were practicing tonight. When they come and play, the kids play in the skate park. The kids play on the playground. And we have a full house. So tonight, there are people mounting a 60-inch TV that was donated to us by some people that just moved into Manistee. They brought us this 60-inch TV and said, "We hope you can use it," and came with a VCR, CD player, and a stack of movies to watch for the kids. So that was very nice of Mr. and Mrs. Reese that have just moved to town. So we have ping pong pool, foosball, basketball, tennis equipment, cornhole, and we're looking for a busy summer coming up. I hope to get a skateboard exhibition like we had some years back to come back and do a show this summer and get some life back into the skate park. That's all that I have. There's any questions?
Questions?
Thank you for what you do.
Thanks. It's fun. I wouldn't, I don't know what else I would do.
I think we all appreciate all that's done on behalf of the children and, you know, with the skate, ice skating and other thing. I know it's a challenge.
It's a, it's a group effort, you know, this year. I tried to work with the city guys more to help that happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Concerns and comments. Item A, citizen comment. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on municipal services, activities, or areas of city involvement. Citizens in attendance shall be recognized by the mayor for comments limited to five minutes. Letters submitted to council will not be publicly read. Are there any citizens that wish to make comment? Yes, Mr. Horkel.
Bob Horkel, 432 Cedar Street. Just to let you know, our deer population is going to expand again this spring. It's about time we do something now. I've just spent a lot of money on deer repellent, and it hasn't helped. So I think there are things we can do. I'd like the city to contact the DNR again, have them come in and see what they can do. I know they came in a number of years ago and refused to do anything, so let's see if they'll do something now. Thank you.
Are there any other citizen comments? If not, we'll move on to item B, officials and staff. City manager?
Nothing at this time.
City attorney?
Nothing, Your Honor, thank you.
City clerk? Chief Finance Officer? The Public Safety Director?
Public Director, thank you.
Public Works Director?
The local street paving project is moving along very well. They're finishing up Ford Street right now. I believe they will need to finish up a portion of Sixth Avenue and Short Street on Friday. And we have one segment of First Street that we are going to be, we have to coordinate with M.DOT to remove some of the equipment that they have, but we're going to grind that street between Division and US 31 and then prep it and pave it back all again Friday. So want to make sure we get that out to all the media. We're going to put a posting on our website and on Facebook, but that block will be closed until the paving is restored. It should be sometime in the afternoon, I guess, on Friday. And then we'll have a short lane closures while we restripe it on Monday, so just wanted to get that out.
Looks like they're widening out 31 and First there by the old drugstore. They were pouring cement there today.
We replaced the curb and gutter there. It shouldn't change the width of the lanes at all, though.
Can I ask how you're coming along with trying to identify what you're going to do with that extra $200,000?
You can. I know the engineers have been looking at it, and I've been looking at it separately, and then we plan to get together tomorrow, I believe, a little bit. We're trying to identify the best place to start with the reconstruction. When we talked about it at, was it the last meeting? The, what I would really like to do is on the north side where Militzer has absolutely no storm sewer. We've got storm sewer to the east. We've got storm sewer to the west. And we've got a section kind of in the center of the north side where they didn't extend pipes. They simply knocked the bottoms out of the catch basins and let them leach into the soil, and we get flooding there all the time. So what we talked about this morning was looking for where we might have capacity in those existing storm sewers, how we can extend kind of a trunk line that then we can spread out, and as we rebuild those streets, we've got the appropriate stormwater to go with it. So that's what I'm looking at right now. Hospital hills come up quite a bit in our discussions, and, but I'm not sure we can stretch that $200,000 to go from the top to the bottom of that. And then there's lots of other smaller ones that we could look at. We also discussed today that the sewer rehabilitation that you approved tonight, that doesn't require any pavement work because it's all done through the manholes for the majority of the work. And so we're also going to be looking at different road segments that have sewer rehab that's required, but will be done with this contract for sewer lining, but also next year's contract. And so there may be some candidates in there also, if for some reason we can't, you know, extend that storm and so forth. So it's still in process.
Okay. Well, maybe next council meeting, you'll have something more firm.
We'll keep working on it, for sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Planning and zoning. City engineer?
I have a question for city engineer. Just a quick, you don't have to come up. Are we on schedule? Will I be able to break my bottle of wine on that last closure and christen it?
I can tell you every time you ask, it's getting a little bit tighter. We're still on schedule. We're shooting for June 30th. We've got to get some approvals from the DEQ, and that's going to be our issue. It's really going to come down to getting these approvals through, on June 30th, prior to June 30th. We've got some meetings set up. I think this week, we're going to send another email correspondence back and forth. We're kind of talking all the time, but there's, there's a lot of work to be done in the next 30 to 40 days. And it all has to do with a lot of technical things, but hydraulic modeling and how we simulate the system and the CSOs in the system. And they're very picky about how we do that, and so we're working through that right now. And it's a key component, is getting their acceptance, as well as just getting the work done.
Are you still leaning towards above-ground storage?
Yes. We're going to be submitting our applications with two alternatives. One is under, below grade, and one's above. But definitely, everything we've seen so far leans towards cost-wise to do it above grade.
Thank you.
Mr. Laffin, DDA Director, do you have any comments? Item C, councilmembers.
I've been making great use of the recycling center where you dump your yard waste and other yard products, byproducts, having cleaned out my backyard rather sufficiently over the weekend. So I want to appreciate the fact that we have that. It's convenient. It's handy, because I don't like leaving branches on the curb, and I don't like leaving bags of leaves out to be picked up. So I'm very grateful that we have that service. Next.
I'm, nothing.
Nothing, Your Honor?
Denise, what are we doing with those houses down, you're on Pine, and there, anybody movement on that?
I think the developer is building as they sell right now. I have not talked to the developer in a while, so I can reach out to him if you like.
I mean, everybody asks me about it, and I can't tell him nothing. I tell him to call you, so.
That's fine. Have him call me.
I've just got a few items. You know, Mr. Horkel, it seems that you appear here every time you're in the newspaper. Paper indicated that 20 years ago today, you were Citizen of the Year here at Manistee. Congratulations. Unfortunately, former Fifth District Councilmember Catherine Zaring lost her battle late last week. I saw her husband Glenn today. And it would keep Glenn in your prayers. It's a rough time in his life. I think we're all saddened to lose Catherine. She fought a good fight, but it was a bit overwhelming by the time they got to that point with the cancer, so everybody keep that in mind. The 2nd of June is the city employee recognition. Those councilmembers that wish to participate and help out with that, if you'd let me know, we can make arrangements. Hopefully, we'll grill and have baked beans and coleslaw and it's a potluck kind of thing. I ordered some liquid refreshment the other day, and there'd be other, other things available. We had a good event last year. I look forward to an even better event this year. The, there's also, the Elks is sponsoring a first responder type of event on the 14th of July for first responders and families in the area, so keep that in mind. With that...
Are you asking, you want council money also towards that?
Yeah, if you want to contribute something towards it, you can do that.
Okay. That's for the employee appreciation.
Yeah.
Yes, okay.
Employee appreciation, yeah. Yes, you got the potluck coming up, right? The chicken.
Yes. I don't remember the date, though. June 5th, on Wednesday. Councilwoman Beaton reminded me when she talked about recycling. This Saturday is our paint recycling event from 8:00 a.m. till noon. Any resident in the city can bring any of their liquid paint, latex, or oil-based, and bring it down. And we will, we've got a company that's coming in, working with Republic Services, where all of that paint will be taken downstate and recycled and reused and reformulated into new paint. There's no cost to the citizens.
I saw that on Facebook today, so.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.